It looks like Darlene is missing and Andy is here, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone ready? Okay, you're recording. Good. I'd like to call this Board of Health Study Session for Wednesday, February 24th at 10:30 a.m. to order. Could we call the roll, please?
Danielle Chinowith.
Present.
Andy Kornstrom.
Present.
Darlene Clubel.
We have a quorum with two board members present. The first item of business is public participation. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak? I only see staff and board members. Next, so closed public participation. Next is old business, and we don't have any new businesses. Discussion of billing questions for the annual health permit renewal for April 2021. Jim? Thank you. You're on mute, Jim.
What's the new paint in that room, man? His mute button's stuck.
Still muted, no one.
We want to hear what you have to say, but we cannot.
Bottom left.
How about now?
Yeah.
Yep, we can hear you.
All right. Technology still gets me. All right, I gave you the information memorandum, give you some background of our billing practice that we did last year and some of the decisions that were made last year. We're getting ready to send out the bills as the memorandum says, mail them out March 31st. Our, you know, we're going with the assumption that everything is kind of normal. But there were some questions that we had, and maybe if we could address each one of those questions, I could direct staff then, okay? Any questions before we get started?
Andy, no, doesn't look like it.
Okay. Well, the first one is, we have about 25 food establishments that have yet to still complete either sending in their annual renewal application. These are places that we do not charge a fee for, or have not sent in their application or paid their reduced fee from fiscal year 2020. So first thing is, is it acceptable to have two invoices? One for the balance due for fiscal year 2020, and then one for the fiscal year 2021?
So if I understand this correctly, we we basically reduced the annual fee, waived the late fee and the reinstatement fee. And there are 25 folks who just didn't pay the lower rate in fiscal year 2020.
Yes, although some non-for-profits, all they have to do is resubmit an application. So there are some nonprofits in there, too.
Okay, and yep. I have no concerns with that approach, Andy.
No, I think that that makes the most sense, too. Yeah, that I support that as well.
Okay, that's what we'll do. The second question, oh, I should have a comment. Too bad Darlene's not here. You know, in the background, I told you that we had 885, I think it was, food establishments as of January 1st, 2021. Nineteen fewer than the year before. For the county, the net change is one additional food establishment, so.
So we have a net gain in 2020 of food establishments?
The county had a net gain of one. Whereas the CUPHD jurisdiction lost eight, 18 or 19 establishments.
Okay.
And it's still evolving, but as of that date, that's the comparison.
Quick question, Jim, are some of the folks who are behind on their permits, folks that may have closed and we're not aware of that?
Yeah, that's a possibility, too. When we send out the invoices, the stuff will come back.
Okay.
And some of them are, most of them are individual operators, but there are some corporate chains, too, at least two corporate chain ones, so.
Okay.
The second question was, do, does the CUPHD issue a permit for fiscal year 2021 if they don't pay fiscal year 2020 fee and just pay fiscal year 2021?
My initial is no, but I could be persuaded otherwise.
Yeah, that answers the three and four. Impact number two. Looking at like, how do we, how do we handle hardships? I feel that they don't pay and they don't provide any reason for non-payment, and they don't negotiate around any hardship, then absolutely, they wouldn't, they have to pay for both years. But otherwise, it's not fair to those who have paid. There has to be, you know, equality in how folks are treated, the different businesses are treated. That said, let's talk a little bit about the hardships and how we handle those pieces. But that would be my sense is if there's no communication around hardship and no request for a payment plan or something like that, then absolutely, you know, they're not really working with us on getting that, those fees paid up.
And I would say of those 25 places, we don't have any knowledge of them wanting to negotiate a payment plan or whatever. We have done that with some people. Not these, not as far as I know, not these 25.
Are these, are the 25, is there overlap with that list and the list of not compliant around mask wearing and other things? Okay.
Except for, maybe, except for one, it could be, we have Dollar General. I don't remember which store has not renewed their permit, and we've had problems with Dollar General stores with compliance with face coverings, but I don't know if they match up yet.
Yeah. Okay, so what I'm hearing is generally, yeah, we need to, what I would do is, you know, issue a warning, let, you know, make sure that people receive a written warning, certified mail before we you know, to let them know what is happening. It's probably going to be a very small number. You will, you know, you will not receive, you do not have your permit, you will not be receiving your permit. We need this. And then information, we'll get to, if there's hardship, contact us.
So I guess we could go to three then, too. Do hardships still apply? You still wish to have people who say, you know, I may need to extend my payments or accept a partial payment or something like that? Do you still want to do that for?
We've been taking late payments, correct? In, under COVID, we took late payments, correct?
Right.
And we did, and we did not waive the late fee and the reinstatement fee.
Correct.
I think until we get back to full operational, I think it's appropriate that we provide some ability to do hardship work with them. That would be my preference. We know that not everybody, I mean, if they're following the rules, of course, they're not at full capacity. There's got to be limited, at least a slightly limited level of revenue coming in. So I think it's only appropriate to give them a break for, you know, either the next six months or the rest of the fiscal year, however we want to do it.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, I ask landlords every day to waive late fees. So, and many of them do. I would say the majority right now are waiving late fees. I think the public health should do the same.
So we can understand that. We can understand hardships and not impose the late fee or the reinstatement fee. And we can tell you by May 1st how things are going, you know?
That sounds right.
Okay.
Yep, so I think number two is, we don't issue the permit, but we do let them know that we'll take partial payment. You know, we issue that warning to let them know, we have not received your payment. This is what's due. As per the Board of Health, we will take partial payments. We're waiving late fees. You know, be in contact with us within seven days or whatever you choose, you know?
So if we have, you know, typically what we do is that if we don't have the information by May 1st, there's a late fee. So if someone was in good standing, you know, they paid up in fiscal year 2020, and we're in now fiscal year 2021, and they are late, do we have the late fee and reinstatement fee? Because we have about a third of our places every year are late.
Yeah, so you're saying at what point do we reinstate late fees?
Yeah.
I would say come back to us May 1st and tell us where you are. I think that we need, I think that right now, you know, Andy certainly chime in, but my opinion is, is that we should take a wait-and-see approach.
Yeah, I think we need to continue to give grace. I mean, there's still a lot of uncertainty. And although things are looking better and restaurants are opening up, I'd prefer to just err on that side rather than be aggressive with it.
These are two years where late, being late is totally appropriate. I cannot speak to the past. I would not necessarily say it's appropriate, but these two years it is.
Okay. I think all my questions have been answered.
Okay. Let's see. I don't think there are any action items. This is just the discussion piece. I did, our next meeting is March 8th at 4:30, and our study session is March 31st at 10:30. Before we adjourn, I just wanted to ask if there was any reports of officers that you wanted to share, and then I just had a question about the fees for non-compliance for face masks and when we might see that coming to the board. But Julie, if you have any reports of officers, I don't know if you do, or I was.
You know, just our numbers, where, what we're waiting on today is what, what we're getting for next week. It seems like we've been, our doses have been really curtailed trying to get some of the surrounding counties in the state caught up, it sounds like, so.
And we're still, we're out of doses? That's what we were told when some staff called this morning.
Yeah, we have no first doses. We're doing, like today at the iHotel, for example, we're doing 1,200 second doses. Carl's doing second doses, and then here at Public Health, we're doing doses. We are having a clinic on Friday for about 50 members of the deaf community because it's going to take a lot more, a lot more time to get through all the information. So we're just running a two-hour afternoon, and we've got about, I think about 50 people coming for that, so. And then we're going to be at the iHotel till about March 12th, right, away? And then, then we're going to be Carl, Kristy, OSF, all, you know, Frances Nelson. They'll continue doing clinics and seeing people for their first doses and second doses. And we will be focusing more on trying to do some outreach clinics. So I met yesterday with a pastor from the Congolese community. I've met with, well, I've met with the deaf community, obviously. I've met with, we're meeting with people from Guatemalan community, Spanish-speaking community, French-speaking community. So we're trying to figure out where to get clinics, you know, set up and what we, if we need to do a lot of education and outreach prior to that. So we're going to start that. Looks like the Congolese, one of the Congolese churches will have us in, like 10 minutes at the end of one of their services to just give a spiel about vaccines and answer questions. And then we'll probably go back at some point and either use the churches or our mobile unit or a combination of both and do vaccine clinics.
And if someone wants to receive the vaccine at this point, they have to wait? Or should they go through their provider and through Public Health?
No, at this time there are no, if you're talking about first doses, there are, yeah. No, there, everything's already booked up, so.
The only, only one is Walgreens opens up once in a while as they receive more vaccines. So just check with Walgreens. All seven locations of Walgreens are offering vaccines in Champaign.
Okay.
So that, that really is the way to, and Andy, you might want to look into that, too, is to get, you know, get on those sites, sign up for them. And then if they have a, you know, as long as it's within the category that the state is vaccinating, as long as you fit in those categories, then you would be able to, to get it, so.
Is there demographic information about vaccination levels that is, that's available and are there?
It's on our, it's on our website.
demographic information about vaccination, okay.
Yeah, so once you click on the vaccination link and then you click, there's like some little graphics down kind of at the bottom corner, and it's like sex, race.
Okay.
Yeah, and you can, you can look at it down there. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Yeah, I think I was looking in the wrong place. Okay.
And it takes you to the IDPH site. Basically, what, yeah.
Ruth, did you have an update on the expected time that we'll be talking about fines for non-compliant businesses?
Sure. So, um, I have been delayed in this, and so I apologize. But I've been looking at, and we looked at sort of some comparisons. We have the smoke-free, Illinois Smoke-Free Ordinance that has, or Smoke-Free Statute that has individual fines and has fines for companies or businesses who don't comply on the smoke-free stuff. So similarly, I think under the emergency orders, under, what is it, 6.90? There are, it says that there are fines for the businesses, but not, it does not have individual fines for individual violations. I believe that you all had said you still wanted individual or, sorry, fines for individuals who have violated the ordinance by not wearing the mask. And so we've had reports from, Jim has shown me from different, some of the different businesses. And essentially, the businesses are, as I understand it, not willing to order or tell people that when they come in, they have to wear a mask. And if they don't, then they are, they can't come in. But a couple of the businesses are just unwilling to order that or have their employees order it. And so so I've looked at this, so looking at this, I guess, I want to make sure I understand. What I think it would involve is getting, is amending the local mask-wearing ordinance to say if you don't do this, you know, that individuals will be fined and businesses will be fined with similar to sort of the other, the, what I compare to is the Smoke-Free statute, which is a graduated numbers or amounts. And assuming that's what you want to do, I'll look at sort of, I was going to call Saguaman County, because I think they have been a leader in a lot of this, and sort of see what they have done or if they have, sort of what ordinances they've done in case they've seen challenges or issues come up with any of theirs. I'm not aware of any other communities in Illinois that have the, have fines for individuals or businesses, but I haven't really looked. So if, I don't know if Jim or Julie or any of you all have know of any, and then I can follow up on that and, and try and get you a draft. I would say hopefully by the next meeting. I've got a Class X felony jury trial next week and arguments in the Illinois Supreme Court to, in about two weeks. But I'll try and work on this other stuff because I know it's important to you all and get you at least a draft to look at.
Um. Just, I want to do a quick because I try to take notes at each of our meetings, and my notes are a little bit pick and scratch, I will admit, because I'm also facilitating. But my notes say that we were looking for a fee structure for non-compliant food establishments where they say remain open when they were told to be closed, as well as allowing people to not wear masks and that we did not want it to cover individuals, only organizations.
Oh, okay.
And that it was for both of those things, both like non-compliance, not, you know, as well as which, you know, would be an issue in the future at this point because they're open, or maybe if they were open and had more capacity people, then CUP Public Health had designated them, they would be non-compliant. So, but Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, I, that's what my notes are saying. I remember there was a question about whether or not Jim asked, do we want to go beyond food establishments not opening and include face coverings? We said yes. And then do we want, do we have jurisdiction to cover individuals and organizations? And we decide, I thought we said not for individuals, just for the organizations or entities, businesses, nonprofits, the entities. And then there was a third question, should it be discretionary? And Andy said no, and we agreed, no, not, not to have it discretionary. Those are my notes, but.
Yeah, that, I mean, I'm glad you took notes because I don't remember yesterday, let alone that meeting. But I think that I'm still agreeable to those thoughts. My only concern with mandating individuals is, first of all, how do you enforce it? Who's going to enforce it for you? And so, yeah, I think what you just summarized would, I would be supportive of as well.
Yeah, I mean, there are minutes from the meeting, so we need to pull those minutes. I think that would be another, I, you know, there was a verbal motion made.
I'm confused, though. And back in August, when you passed the face covering ordinance, you, you know, we adopted what they had in 690.5, which included businesses but exempted individuals. But when you made your ordinance itself, you wanted individuals not to be excluded. And so I'm thinking that, this is like with Home Depot, for example, there's the business, but then there's store management as an, the manager as an individual. Was that the intent that you had back in August? And then the other thing is that sometimes I think I get confused is that when we had the problem of closing businesses because they weren't obeying the executive order to close, we were, we were doing, we weren't looking at face coverings in that at the time. We were actually looking at the fact that they were remaining open, even though they were supposed to be closed. That's why we were going to court.
Yeah.
And so that seems like a separate thing from the ordinance that you guys adopted in August.
Correct. So my understanding is that our primary concern is that when food establishments remain open or have an occupancy that is not authorized, what we thought would happen was that the cities would enforce and be able to protect the public interest and public health by issuing fines, escalating fines. City of Champaign chose not to do that, and we saw public health put at risk in Champaign for months with non-compliant restaurants. We then discovered that we didn't have a tool personally in-house with CUP Public Health to do escalating fines. And we decided as a board, we wanted that tool. So that was the first and foremost issue. And then the question was, well, and I believe, Jim, it was you, at least in my notes, which again, or, you know, is that you said, well, should it also cover, should we be looking at enforcement of face coverings in this escalating fine structure? If, for example, as it happens with a lot of places in town, the business does not enforce masks and face coverings, is there a tool that we have to cite them for that? And you know, I did believe that we had put that in place in August, that we had put some level of tool in place. You can clarify with me if that has ever been used. But maybe it didn't have a fine structure with it. We said it's prohibited, but it didn't necessarily have a dollar figure associated with it. And it was my understanding that was the missing piece. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think so. Regarding face coverings, we have gotten, we've issued notices of non-compliance, maybe about 15 of those. Two or three notices to disperse, and we have not issued any notices for referral for prosecution, but we're getting real close on that one.
What's an issue to disperse?
I'm sorry, what?
What is an issue to disperse?
That's the second step in the 690.50 administrative code rule.
This is around coverings, and they're issued to the agencies?
This is around face coverings, yes.
Yeah.
So most of our activity is dealing with face coverings in really non-food establishment businesses. Food establishments were, because they weren't closing.
Yeah. That, when you say you're about to do enforcement, what would that enforcement look like? Shutting them down or a fine structure?
That's what I, I don't know what to do. I don't, I don't think we have anything in place. I mean, the third step is a notice to refer for prosecution, and when we prosecute, I don't know what happens.
And just, so we're talking about non-food establishments, so Home Depot, again, using them as an example.
It's, yeah, that's where our, our problems are.
I mean, how, the problem we have is what jurisdiction, unlike food establishments where we license them, what jurisdiction do we really have over Home Depot? I mean, I know we have a public health jurisdiction, but, but we don't, we have no teeth in our process.
Right. It's, it's sort of like, you sort of need the fine structure. So what happens, let's say a business won't quit making people smoke at their business. We've had that multiple times. And then it gets referred to the state's attorney, and they I guess, fine them, or we fine them. No, we fine them a certain amount, and then they don't pay us, and then it goes to the state's attorney's office, and then they prosecute them, and then if they uphold the fine, then if they don't pay the fine, then they're in contempt of court. So it's really ridiculous, but that's how long it takes to, you know, get to anything, but, but that's.
Actually, that's a structure that I think, Ruth, you're saying that you're looking at with the smoking ordinance is that essentially, it sounds like with the face coverings, we don't have that fine structure. That's the most immediate need right now because we don't have as much of an issue of people, you know, the restaurants are open, so to speak. I mean, there may be some issues with occupancy, but I'm not aware of them.
Yeah, we don't, we don't get any complaints.
Okay.
Restaurants are complying pretty good, you know?
Yeah. So it is a little different and feels a little bit different than restaurants because in the, because the Public Health District licenses restaurants. I'm not sure that the Public Health District has any licensing privilege or licensing rights with, like Walgreens, Home Depot.
Yeah, Walgreens we do, Walgreens we do, not Home Depot because they don't have any food.
Okay, so then, yeah, it might be a little bit different with, with those entities. So with the Walgreens, so that's a licensing as opposed to Home Depot, there's no licensing. So I do think that then, that those two would be treated differently. Those that we have licensing powers over, because then you can withhold something, and then they have to close, or they can't sell or do whatever they, they think that, you know, they want to do. So that's nice. The Home Depot types are a little bit different. The city of, so we have both, we have the Public Health District ordinance that says you got to wear face masks out, you know, in any enclosed place, that sort of thing. You guys passed that when the COVID hit. I think the cities of Champaign and Urbana both have it, so I think they could also enforce it. We aren't, we are not a home rule municipality as Champaign and Urbana are. So there's some different powers there. But I think that there is still authority, just like there's authority when the Public Health District sued Mary Ann's Diner to be able to, to be able to regulate this. It's a little bit different because when it's the state's attorney's office, and of course, I'm at the state's attorney's office, they can prosecute it as even a sort of a criminal proceeding, although I'm not sure that, I think they might also just do what are called MR proceedings, miscellaneous remedies. But we might look at doing it separately. I think there is authority by this entity, the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District, to do so. It's a little bit novel and a little bit different. And my guess is that some of the other communities or public health districts are not as strong and don't have as sort of interest in making sure the public, or not willing to go as far as to make sure the public, or public health is protected. I guess the other thing is Danielle's saying not, not fines for individuals, but fines from, and, but there's a question for managers. So I guess, would the, is the desire to look at, do we find a manager who won't enforce it? Do we find a security guard or a greeter who will not enforce it? Or do, because it sounds like you're saying you do not want to enforce it against Joe Schmo who walks into Home Depot and won't wear a mask. But you do want to enforce it against Home Depot, who won't force the person to wear a mask or leave. And then how far down the line does it go? Does it go to a manager? Does it go to the shift manager? Sort of some direction of, or issues to explore on that. So I sort of know where to go on those issues, too. Does that make sense?
Go ahead, Andy.
I thought that we did at some point note that, you know, we would, the business, but also somebody in charge. So whoever's in charge of making that ultimate decision, that's my recollection. And I would support that, you know, whoever the manager is. I don't know that we trickle down to the cashier who's just trying to, you know, make a dollar, but somebody who's responsible for making that decision.
Right, because ultimately, they're the ones that are setting the, setting the policy and setting, you know, setting the policy.
Yep. And I think that, you know, honestly, our issue with individuals has to do with jurisdiction and logistics. Right? So if there's a model out there, because what, what you, what we want, maybe in the, in the end, what we want is that a business that wa- that is wanting its customers to be compliant with public health protocols has a tool to say, you need to do this, and this is the law. And here's the consequences. I have the right to expel you if you don't do it. And then we want the customers who want to or need to access the services of a business safely and are not able to do that because of that business not requiring face coverings, that they be able to say, hey, we need, you know, public health is able to say you have to enforce this. I mean, ultimately, that's what we want. How we get there is a little bit in your court, Ruth. But I think that we were concerned about how, what's the logistics of finding an individual for not wearing a face covering? I think we want to avoid things that are really difficult to enforce. But if we can give a business a tool to enforce it with customers, we should consider that. Darlene, you have your hand up. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry I'm late. I had physical therapy this morning. The, the law says that you cannot find, it specifically excludes finding individuals. So when the, when the executive order was written at the state, when the governor signed it, it specifically excluded being able to find individuals for not wearing masks or complying. So what would have to happen is we would have to just focus on the business. And the business has the right to turn away people that are not wearing masks.
Except the CUPHD board did pass an ordinance that included individuals.
Well, yeah, we did. But I think that the question is, do we have the jurisdiction? Do we have the jurisdiction to do that? And it is a public health issue. So the question is, does public health have the ability to make that rule and enforce it? Because that's how we would have to enforce it is that public health has the right to do that in our county. Based on public health concerns. Because it's not, that's not a business issue. It won't be, they can't do something like, you know, it's a, the only, the only restriction to like Home Depot would be a business license problem otherwise. And that actually would have to go to the state, I think, to remove their business license.
Just to speak to that, thank you, Darlene. I think when we wrestled with this in the fall, our reading of the executive order at the time is that it, it's not that it prohibits us from, it prohibits us from including individuals. It's that it clarified that the state executive order does not include individuals. So I think that's the, in the reading of it, it didn't say municipalities shall be prohibited from. It doesn't state that. It's simply, my reading of it at the time is, and I'm not an attorney, is that it clarified that the state's executive order did not apply to individuals in terms of enforcement. So I think that was, we chose as a board to include individuals, but we don't have a, a fee or fine structure or logistics.
Okay, okay.
And that's what we're looking at now is it started with what happens when a food establishment like Marianne stays open for two months? Right? It started with that. And then we said, well, we also, if we're looking at a fine structure, should we also consider that we don't have a fine structure for the, you know, for businesses who are noncompliant with masks? And should we consider individuals in that?
So I'm thinking that there's two parts to that. One would be the business owner is not enforcing the rule. So that would be one type of fee structure or or sanction. And the other one, if we want to go with individuals, we would have to think of it more, I think, like Julie's had to deal with people, for example, with tuberculosis. So if they're still out walking around with tuberculosis, then I think it'd be similar to that kind of thing, regardless of where they go. It's not, it's not related to the business. It's related just to the person not complying. So two different things. Yeah.
We've been looking, Ruth had earlier, she's looking at smoking ordinances because that's a situation where individuals were essentially smoking, you know, right outside a door. Business was saying, don't do it, you know? And they would continue to do it. What is the, what's the appropriate action? And frankly, that entire enforcement process with smoking was extremely smooth. I was on council at the time that we put our own smoking ban in place before the state did it. And there was so much alarm that, you know, we'd never be able to enforce it. And I don't know, I mean, I would talk with the officers, but the report we got back was actually that the process went very smoothly. So looking at that might be.
It did, it did change the culture. I think a lot of these places that we're having with like Home Depot and stuff, you know, is, are, that's people coming in from out of town. I'm sure. It's people coming in, you know, from that, that just for whatever reason don't, you know, don't want to follow any guidance.
Okay, so what I heard, what I heard from Ruth is that a potential draft on this by the next meeting. And I want to make sure that she has, you know, she has good direction from us to be putting that together. Ruth, are you still with us?
I am still here. I'm just, I have a court hearing, so I'm, I'm over at the courthouse. But, yeah, and so what I will likely do, if you want to give me the direction, and then I'll follow up with individuals as well to, and with staff to make sure I'm clear on this and then look at the different authority that we have to be able to do this.
Okay. Yeah, I think it helps to, if we are in, if we are in alignment as a board, that our goal is to give businesses and organizations a tool that if they have an individual who's not complying, they have some tool to address that. And individuals tools if the business is not addressing it. That's like, we kind of focus on our goal, what we're trying to get at. And then we look at what are some of the best practices? And we get for discussion at our next meeting, look at a draft resolution that accomplishes that or seeks to accomplish that.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good.
Yep. Anything else?
I just.
Not, not for me.
Okay. Thanks, Ruth. Go ahead, Jim.
I just want to mention something, Darlene, since she arrived late. In the information memorandum, you know, CUPHD, I tracked the number of active food establishments of January 1st, 2019, and then to 21. CUPHD had a net loss of 18 food establishments. The county had a net gain of one. Then I'm done.
Okay. Who writes press releases for CUPHD?
Amy.
All right, thanks.
Are you one here to write a press release about that?
No, no, I just think, I just was thinking about how we message, especially in anticipating the ordinance that we're looking at for next one. Okay, if there is no further business before us, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.